Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being audio recorded. I would like to confirm that we have a quorum of school committee members. I will call the list in case some members are on audio only. Abington? No. Hanson?
Here.
Rockland?
Here.
Situitt?
Yeah.
Whitman?
Here.
And Hanover's here. Is that the quorum, Tom?
Yes. Chairman, the member from Situitt just joined. Uh, Situitt from Cohasset, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. There will be no agenda adjustments tonight. And at this time, we're going to go to the school plan and I'll ask Tom to do a quick review for of it for us. Tom, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for your flexibility adjusting the schedule in light of the adjusted timelines for the plan. In materials that I had already sent to you, I'm bringing to you tonight a plan which was put together with some very concerted efforts of a working group of administrators and staff, faculty, as well as some surveys that we had done with our parents. And as you've seen in the news, there's a lot of talk about districts and what return to school plans they have. And recommended model for us, they hybrid model. The key element of a hybrid model is that it's going to allow us flexibility to respond to circumstances should they change. So this is, this is something to start with. And as things evolve in one way or another, we will, we will adapt. But for right now, for take of all of our community members, need to start with something. And so the hybrid model will work something like this. Students will be in their academic settings for two days out of five. As we all know, we have always had an alternating schedule between academic week and shop week. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm referring to when I'm, when I'm talking about these weeks. So regardless of what grade you're in, or in school for two days in a five-day academic week, you are learning remotely for three days. What we're trying to explain to parents is that for our freshman and sophomore classes, two days they're going to be in may vary depending on what cohort we're placed in. That's something we'll communicate to them before the start of the year. So for instance, may have a ninth grader who lives in your neighborhood, might be going into school on Monday and Wednesday. And you may have another neighbor whose ninth grader is going into school on Wednesday and Friday. It's, it's going to be somewhere between Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, two of those three days. And for the older kids in grades 11 and 12, when they are in their academics, they would be coming into school on Tuesdays and Thursdays. They would also be home remotely. Remote learning will not be the remote learning from what we, what we had to endure, all of us do our best at from March until June. This is going to be synchronous learning. This is going to happen in real time. Will be a schedule that students will follow. There will be attendance that is taken. All of the protocols and structures that we would employ in a face-to-face regular school year, you'll employ here, in the hopes of providing some structure for students. The shop week is going to be, for most kids, is going to be a full week of in-person. We had a lot of responses from our community saying that they fully understand, we want kids to be safe. We have nothing to gain by just stuffing kids in a building. We certainly want to be safe. They, but folks also recognize that a hands-on component is not easily replicated through the world of YouTube or other third-party videos. And so we are emphasizing in-person instruction. So kids who are in grade nine and 10, they will be in all week. Kids in grades 11 and 12, they will also be in all week, with the exception of some students in a few shops, like health, computer tech, graphics, and Met 2. They will be going to school on an alternating day method. I had referred to it in the plan as either two days off or three days on, but I just want to clarify that we want to be able to make sure that it's evenly balanced. So it's going to basically, basically in a school year where you have 90 shop days, means that 45 of them will be on campus in person and 45 of them will be remote. Now, that's the shell of the hybrid model. How did we arrive at it? We looked at our pressure points. All know that the building is too small and you layer in a public health crisis like this and it really exacerbates some of the issues with size. What we outlined in the plan is that we took a very close look at transportation, which is essential. We know how many buses we have and how many drivers. And we learned in the middle of the summer what the state guidance was. So we know we're going to run 11 buses that can have 25 kids on a bus. And that's what led us to conclude that in order to get kids in the building, we would also, as part of this, as part of this plan, have a staggered schedule. So our school day is going to be slightly shorter. We are going to run two sets of bus runs, the morning and in the afternoon. So if you are a student in grade nine or grade 10, you are going to have the same schedule every day, doesn't matter what week it is. Day will start later, 9:05. You'll get dismissed at what we have called the regular time, 2:25. If you're a junior or a senior, your world is going to be split a little bit. When you have your shop week, you're going to come in at 7:40, you're going to get dismissed a little earlier, 1 o'clock. So every grade, and that will be the same for when seniors are on shop week as well. So the school day is shortened by about 75 minutes and that is simply to allow for a second run of buses. That will allow us to bring in some kids, 7:40, and clean those buses, then go out with a full fleet of buses, pick up vast majority of kids. Strategy here also allows us to spread out flow of kids as they're entering the building. And it allows us to better structure a shop day with two grades of students in, in the shop. So transportation helped give, bring us to a conclusion that a staggered schedule would make sense. And if the spirit of this is to try to bring kids in safely, with the best instructional environment possible, when I contacted the Department of Education, they approved our waiver. They, they have approved our modification for a shorter school day to allow the bigger picture to flourish in bringing in the kids that we can. Other than transportation, the other two pressure points we had to deal with were classroom space issues and lunch space. Because we will have to rely on a three-foot spacing between students, we knew that if we had to do the six-foot spacing, I'd probably be coming to you tonight with an all-remote academic model. So the three-foot with a mask, sanitizing, social distancing, whole package of protections is what we're, is what will allow us to create those cohorts I talked about. Then the lunches. We cannot, we cannot have kids eating lunches in classrooms. If we did, we'd have to take all of our classes and literally cut them in half because eat lunch in the schoolhouse, have to be six feet apart. And of course, no one's figured out how to eat lunch with a mask on. So masks come off in order for you to eat lunch. And therefore, if you were to walk into our gymnasium or our cafeteria at the start of the school year, you will find 70 desks in our entire gymnasium, six feet apart in rows. You will find 30 to 35 desks in our cafeteria. That's where we will be serving five lunches, approximately 90 to 100 students in each lunch. So we, we looked at instructional models, but we had to be pragmatic about how we can get people in the building safely. And, and so that's where, that's where the hybrid model with a staggered schedule came from. Let me just pause here and see if there are any questions on the mechanics of, of that
No, it's fine.
I'll tell you a little bit more about the hybrid model. We are going to be supplying all of our students with either a Chromebook or a laptop to start off the year. And then we'll get in a shipment of additional Chromebooks and we'll swap out those laptops. We do not want, as part of our many, many, many safety, sanitation, and health protocols, we're going to issue a Chromebook or a device, let's say, to every kid. And they're going to be responsible for bringing it to and from. That way, we don't have Chrome carts where it's a using those computers and then we have to clean them so someone else can use them. So we'll issue them. Now, we will supply technical support. That's something that the administrators and I will be working on for the rest of this month, to build a robust help desk model as we begin to envision all of the what-ifs. This is the, this is really where the mind, you gotta take a break every once in a while because there are so many what-ifs. We want, you have to have a help desk. Have to have a help desk when something goes wrong technologically. The teacher trying to run a class, the student, or the parents. So we're going to build, we will build that capacity as well. I think for, I think, you know, I've discussed the cohort model and the staggered day. As I said at the beginning, this is a flexible component of the hybrid model. If something, you know, if something were to adjust, and let me give you, let me give you a scenario, okay? If we end up having to, having to quarantine a group of, a group of students because someone in a particular group had a family member or they tested positive, we would be able, we would be able to flip a switch and be able to tell a subset of the school, you're going to stay home and assuming you're not symptomatic and ill, you'll be able to transition over to a, a remote model. And it may take a little while, not very long, as our teachers are investing their time right now on building good remote strategies. So that, the mindset is, some point this year, everyone's probably thinking in the bubble above their head, we may have to go remote sometime, whether it's a local, regional, or state directive. And when that happens, we will be, we will be ready. Other major modification to this plan involves our rising ninth graders and exploratory. We will have an exploratory program based on a cohort model as well. All of our freshmen will be put into groups of approximately 15 students. They will visit all of our programs for a half a week. So two days, two and a half days for each shop. And that way, we don't have to be concerned with some child not seeing a particular program. So our teachers are beginning the adjustment to an exploratory program, which still will run from September to December. The components I can briefly mention that will still be running a breakfast program that's optional. I mentioned the lunch program. We're taking lots of precautions with the lunch program as well, in terms of how we'll have prepackaged food and cashless transactions. School calendar is something that we're working on and we have a model for where our staff will return on Tuesday, September 1st, and there will be seven days of staff training. And then on Monday, September 14th, we will start with a, two days of orientation, then begin this hybrid model in, in earnest on Wednesday, the 16th. We will be planning parent information meetings throughout, throughout the tail end of August. We may be running one as early as next Thursday, August 20th, and I'll invite you all if you'd wish to attend any of them, as we want to begin to give parents opportunities, ask questions. Parents have been great. They are reaching out with very specific questions and we love getting questions. We look forward to hearing more, even in some remote conversations. Think, as I look through the, some of the highlights here, I think the health and safety measures deserve just a minute, Mr. Chairman. Along with the, along with the desk commentary I made earlier, the obvious items about frequent hand washing and sanitizing and cleaning, mandatory mask wearing in the building, having bathroom monitors to ensure that we don't have kids gathering in the bathroom unintentionally. We're going to have a COVID-only nurses room. We'll be hiring an LPN to assist our school nurse. We'll be having safety signage around the building. Our ventilation systems are being monitored. Not only did we evaluate the situation, the amount of airflow coming in from outside, but we're also having a third-party, a company that we've worked with frequently, also assist Bob Morehead in looking at ventilation. So I feel, feel that that part of the safety protocol is in, is in very good shape. So this is a school where we will be training people on all of the necessary protocols. We will be controlling for the random movement of students as much as possible. And at the same time, building a remote model that I think will work very well. And certainly with the time to prepare, it will look a lot more structured than it would have back in, back in March. I think, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's probably all for the mechanics. What I'll end with is to tell you that throughout any model that we have, one facet that we, that we put at the center is of course, caring for our students. And so I want to make sure that, that in the plan, and also here at this meeting that I spell out, that we will ensure that students are supported for their social emotional needs, whether they are at their, in their home or they're with us on Webster Street in Hanover. We, we always are very attentive to student needs. We're not going to let a hybrid model come an obstacle. Our counselors and student support team are going to be ready on day one for that as well.
Tom?
I'm sorry.
That's me, Bob Mahoney.
I'm sorry, Bob.
Yeah, I just had a question. Will the kids be exchanging, what, changing classes or are the teachers exchanging, moving classes?
That's, thank you. That's an important clarification. So I want you to imagine that if a parent gets noticed that their child has been placed in something called cohort one, that cohort is a group of 60 students, which they're using to label for really for lunch purposes more than anything else. Those 60 students are going to be placed in three classrooms that are next to one another in one part of the building. But within those 60 kids, they'll, let's just pretend they're going to be placed in groups of 20. That, that number is probably a little high. But to answer your question, no, they will stay in the room that they are assigned. The teachers will come to them. So that further cuts down on the randomization. So if I were to walk you through a student day, whether I drive myself to school or I get off of a bus, I'm going to enter the school through designated entrances with a mask on. If I want to get breakfast, I'm going to go to the breakfast program, purchase my breakfast, sit at a table with my mask off, eat my breakfast, then I'm going to go to my first period class. If I don't want breakfast, I'm going to go directly to first period. When I get to that class, I'm going to have an assigned seat. It'll be my assigned seat for the duration of the day. That homeroom period, if you will, will end and the day will begin, announcements, pledge of allegiance. Then we will begin an academic schedule for that particular, in this particular scenario, where I will be visited by my English, my math, my science, or social studies teacher. For those older kids who have a related, a vocational related class on their academic week, they're going to do something a little different because we're not going to be able to put all the automotive kids into one class necessarily. We'll have those courses taught remotely. If you imagine this, tend, we, on this call, pretend we're all in automotive, but we're all in, we're all in three different classrooms. The time comes for our automotive-related class, we're all going to open up our Chromebooks. We're going to log into Mr. Hennessy's automotive-related class. That's how we will run related. Aye? Because we don't want to mix kids from cohort. Another way of trying to reduce random cross-pollination of, of students. Not airtight, we know it's not. We are trying to address the spirit of the, of the plan, which is to keep kids, to the extent we can, separated and engaged. That's how that, that's how an academic day would look, Bob. And if you flip it and look at a shop day, everything I just described, except I'm going into a shop setting. Shop teachers were calling upon them to separate and space out their shops so that two grades of kids, while they may be in the same orbit, not in each other's grills all day long either.
And the, and the other question I had is the shop teach, the shops will be starting early.
That's correct. If you are, you're an older kid. So if you're an 11th grader or a 12th grader, your day will begin the earliest at 7:40. Your day will run from 7:40 to 1 o'clock.
Okay. I think that's great because that way they, they still get the training of getting up and going to work early.
Yes, I think there are, that is one of several benefits that, that, you know, implementing that, including that if we do have that, if at some point this year, we have after-school activities, means that the, the kids coming in a little later, they will, their school day will end at what we'll call the normal time of, of 2:25. So we won't have to, we won't have to deal with the, to 1 o'clock and all of these younger kids who don't have cars are getting dismissed, but there's stuff to do after school. So there, there are other benefits, but I, I do like that routine, having those kids first.
Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, thank you. First, the cost of the Chromebook, are we, were we putting that on Plymouth County, you know, to get reimbursed?
Yes, we have a couple of options for that. I feel very confident that any technology expenses we have are going to be covered by either the, either Plymouth County or a state grant we were awarded.
Okay. Second of all, what happens when kids are at home and they're, and they're on the Chromebook and that's how we're teaching them, and there is a power outage? How do we deal with it?
So, so that is, that is one of many procedural topics that we're, that we will be addressing. I was actually thinking of the flip, which would be, we have a fire drill at school and you're, and you're home remotely and I've got to get up and, and leave. You'll have, we will have protocols for that as well, but, but.
Well, you tell the kids to get up and leave their house.
We go, all, we're all in this together. Go stand on your front porch, right? But, but those are very, those are very important, those are going to be very important procedures to review with staff, with parents, and students.
Okay, and for kids who are in the trade and they have a job, usually before they would go to work rather than school if they're doing their, their shop, I mean, are they still able to go to work or is it going to be after school now?
Co-op eligible seniors, that is still fair game. So we're already beginning the process now of identifying, we had, we had, we always have a, a nice group of juniors who are on co-op, the tail end of their junior year. That's the first group that we feel that we can launch onto co-op. We're starting the work this summer. We will have to do extra safety checks. We will have to do COVID-19 safety checks. And Desi has provided a comprehensive checklist for us to follow. So we're getting a head start on it. So yes, we will be able to put seniors out in the fall. Juniors are still, that is still delayed. There's, there's no, there's no, no plan from the state to allow juniors to go out early. Yes, seniors for co-op.
Are we, are, are we, or can we go to where they have their co-op job and look at the atmosphere and look at what they're doing there to make sure that the student is not there for a week and back into the classroom and, and gets infected from his, his co-op job?
Yes, we're, we're expecting that employers, I mean, we, we always expect employers will follow OSHA guidelines. This is another whole layer of that as well, that, that we're expecting. And if we continue our universal precautions of masks, hand washing, sanitizing, socially distanced behaviors, our custodial staff continue to clean and disinfect high-touch surfaces. If we follow all of that guidance, we cannot eliminate, we can mitigate the greatest extent possible.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Can you hear me, Bob Mahoney?
Yes, Bob.
I, I have a couple. What about this bit of the, they call it the, what, the second tier of breakfast, the, after they, in class, they have to, they can get a breakfast or something?
Yeah, so, so that references, Bob, is the idea that kids who are, the kids who are coming in, whenever a kid arrives in the building, we're going to, we're going to ask them to come in the building or we'll have the buses drop off, allow them an opportunity to get something for breakfast. Because we have two waves of kids coming in, smaller group at 7:40, the larger group at 9:05, that's what that means. There will be, once, once their instructional day begins, there's no eating in the classrooms, there's no eating in the shop. Basically, when we were all coming in at the same time, there was one breakfast program. So now we're just staggering that opportunity.
Okay. The other question, I guess it's combined. All our towns white on the new map?
When I looked at the map today, I saw, I believe, Abington and Hanover were green. Pembroke was green, our other district towns were white. Someone else could certainly double-check that. But again, green is the, I believe it's less than four cases per 100,000, and white means less than a total of five cases, some, something like that.
Well, what I'm getting at, the governor's, in his last two speeches, the last couple days, is talking about going back regular time and he's basing it on the white county, I believe, the white colors on his map. That was the reason for my question.
Yes. And as I read that guidance, one of the notes I, I made was about, you know, extenuating circumstances. So the point being that if those numbers are low in your region, should really be in school as much as possible. We would say that we have extenuating circumstances because to do that means we wouldn't be able to accommodate the spacing guidelines. But you are correct, the more white that you're seeing on that map, that's the lowest incident rates would, should assist a district in making a decision.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but I think Hull had a change today. I didn't see it on the map, but I heard them talking about, I think they went back to red. I don't know. But, okay, I don't have anything else.
Okay. All right. If nobody else has anything at this time, I'd ask for a, who?
Mr. Haywood, can I just ask, Mr. Aubrey?
Sure.
Go ahead, Mr. Mahoney.
Have you heard anything from the MIAA about no after-school activities, no sports or anything?
They came out with some initial guidance just this afternoon, and they're leveling the, I'm going to say leveling the playing field, the more contact you have, the less likely that sport is going to take place. So full-contact football is already off the table. And then sports like volleyball and soccer, which we also have, would be limited to contact and things like that. So the athletic directors and myself need to look at that and decide what is safe and what can we participate in.
No football, no lacrosse, like, like if lacrosse was going on now, that, that would be considered a contact?
Yes, correct. The two sports that have been green-lighted thus far for the fall are golf, and the other one just escaped me. Oh, cross-country.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the return to school plan, which proposes opening school with hybrid model.
We'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Whitman?
Whitman seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please answer with your town.
Aye.
Can I make a roll call on that if you, just to double-check? Just a suggestion.
All right. Hold on. Let me get my list.
Not present.
Okay, Cohasset? Not present?
George is muted.
Oh, he's muted.
Okay. Hanson?
George, gentlemen?
Hanover, yes. Norwell?
Okay, Cohasset here.
Okay, are you in favor of the motion?
I, yes, Cohasset, yes.
Okay, thank you. Rockland?
Yes.
Situitt?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Anybody opposed? All right, the motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Tom Hickey, may I ask you a question?
Sure thing.
Hello, Tom.
Hello, George.
Yeah, this is Cohasset. Tom, I was curious, you know, is it possible for a student to get tested for COVID at the nurses' station?
Interesting.
That is, that is something that I, that could eventually be possible. Make no mistake about it, we're all consuming a lot of news and I think the idea of rapid testing is going to be an essential part of.
A response.
Correct, correct, George. And I, I can't say that that's definitive at, at this time, but it's something that we'll, that was certainly will be advocating for. And because we're located in Hanover, we will be working with, we'll be working most closely with the Hanover Board of Health and Hanover town officials, if those resources become available, certainly. And we'll certainly keep you posted on that.
Okay, thank you for your answer.
Sure.
Hey, Tom, I forgot to ask you a question, did? But this hybrid model, has it been introduced to the, the union at all? And kicked back from the union because you're hearing all the hoopla from the MTA?
Yes, we've had, our core working group was not an official union conversation, but it did have some union members on it, as well as other faculty. it did have some union members on it as well as other faculty, but have had meetings with the union's executive board, productive, constructive meetings, asking questions. And I have another meeting with them, they have some other questions. At, at this point, I have heard, I have received no, I've received no formal communication from them. From what, from, from all the communications thus far, you know, it, it's been constructive.
Will there be clean stations in every classroom, Tom?
You mean supplies, Bob? Cleaning supplies and such?
If you have a to go get up, clean, wash hands, whatever, close, close by?
Yes, yes. So what we're going to do is we'll supply every instructional area, all the common areas, all the offices with hand sanitizer. We'll also supply every area I mentioned, including the caf and the gym, with extra masks. We will have sanitizing stations on our school buses. So it, so wash your hands is, might as well put on a T-shirt because that's what, that's the routine that we're going to ask kids to get into. And if you look at the guidance, just to get really into the weeds here, we're going to have scheduled mask breaks throughout the day. It's important for adults, important for kids. We're New Englanders, we'll go outside in any month, get a breath of fresh air, oxygenate the blood and give ourselves some space from the mask.
Great idea.
When you remove the mask, then put the mask back on, there's, there's an additional hand sanitizing protocol. So we're going to make sure that we're reinforcing all those good habits. We're also going to, I, I didn't mention this, but it, just in the imagery of going outside for mask breaks, we are, we are going to be obtaining four 20 by 40 tents we'll be assembling on campus adjacent to the building. We've made arrangements with the building inspector in Hanover. So that will allow for, again, where we can handle some rough weather, not a monsoon and not a blizzard, but we will still be able to allow people in the early part of the, of the school year, an opportunity to be under attend if they wish, if it's slightly inclement weather.
Make carpentry out there, make those picnic tables.
There you go. We, we, we're going to need a few. And, and although we have marked seats for lunch area, we will also, in some organized way, allow some of those students be able to have lunch outside, which is, which, which is something that, it's again, close proximity, ground level to where the cafeteria is, under a tent, supervised, and we can rotate kids out there, which I think will be good for them.
Right.
Tom, George, again, may I ask you another question?
Sure thing.
I wanted to find out if a student attempts to get on a school bus without a mask, how's that going to go?
Not well for the student. We're not going to allow them on the bus without, without a mask. And we, we owe it to our families for the confidence they place in us to ensure a safe environment. We will also inform them when the time comes with our orientation sessions that we will always have extra masks. And we're not going to leave a kid, you know, we're not going to leave the kid the bus stop because they forgot their mask. So we'll be able to over that hurdle. If there is, if there is a deliberate, you know, agreement about wanting to wear a mask, then the, the child will not be getting on the bus. And we'll have a safety protocol where the bus driver will alert the main office and we will, before the end of the sentence, be on the phone with the parent. Alerting them that, you know, was non-compliant, there was non-compliance. That, that's, that's our intention. I, I have, I would expect that most, most people would understand why we would take that position. Everyone's safety.
Also, if, if the student is driving themselves to school and they forgot their mask, when they get to the front door of the school or how they're getting in the building, then a mask would be available to them there.
Absolutely, yes. We will have stationed staff. We will select the entry points in the building. Again, I'm, I'm imagining both buses and cars arriving and buses pulling around the back, on the side and in the front, to coincide with some parent drop offs. But we'll orchestrate that as best as possible. As they enter the building, someone there, someone on staff will be smiling behind a mask at them.
Yeah.
Is a mask.
Cool, very good.
Tom, is there any money in that thing there to maybe get some SST masks made up to give the kids some pride?
Yes, in fact, Andy was working with a, a subcommittee of staff who helped design and, and, and select. Those are on order. So we will be supplying a mask that has an SST logo on it to all staff, school committee and students.
Beautiful.
Yeah, I'll wear it proudly.
Yes, absolutely.
At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the revision to this 2020, 2021 school calendar, which reflects.
So moved by Whitman.
Second by Whitman. Second by who?
Hanson.
Hanson, very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I.
On the calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I, if I may, just to, just to frame in a couple of, a couple of highlights, the, the revision to the calendar has to do with noting when the start of school is and, and the, as I mentioned earlier this evening, we would start on September 1st with staff. We would start with students on September 14th. The other, the, the only other concrete changes I would like to just point out to you so you're aware, that in the previous version of the calendar, we had placed a full professional development day, November 6th. I've removed that day because I simply do not want to have another disruption. And given, given everything else that's happening, we'll, we'll learn a lot between now and November. We, we do have in, in our contract, the ability to schedule two, up to two professional development days. All years, this is the year where I would, I would just want the maximum flexibility. We may not need them. If we do, I'd like to be very selective as to when we use them. Other thing I'd like to point out is that this calendar does not at the moment have a selected date for our open house. As you can imagine, the vocational technical community is going to be talking a lot about best practices on recruitment in a pandemic. And it's probably not going to include the Bonanza open house that we've become very proud of, a Saturday, October. We are going to be looking for safe options to allow rising ninth graders and, and kids in other grades to, to be able to see our school. So my, the reason it's not on the calendar, it's, it's really just a TBD right now. Maybe what we end up doing is we'll, I would like to have conversations with faculty about getting some ideas of maybe having a series of smaller open houses and splitting up the staff, maybe having open houses where people walk around the outside of the building and they pop into our shops only from the parking lot and the, and the, you know, the, the exterior doors. That will be decided after we get this year launched. If we do schedule an open house that falls on a Saturday, then the Friday before Memorial Day weekend would be a half day as well. I've also noted in the plan, a couple of other things which are not calendar specific. It would be my intention that for the half day on, on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, that would be an all remote day. The half day is simply too small of a day to carve staggered days into shortened staggered days. But the day before Thanksgiving, knowing pretty confidently, we're not going to have a pep rally in the gym, that would be, that would be an all remote, that would be an all remote day. I envision having to come back to you with other revisions. We may find ourselves also not having any snow days in the traditional sense, because unless there's a massive power outage and we have inclement weather, it would prevent safe passage into the building, on any given day, we're going to have a portion of our students remote anyway. So we'll see what Desi tells us for guidance for that. It may mean that we don't have to add days to the calendar. It's not high on their list right now, talking about snow days, but it will be asked soon enough.
It could be, my question is, when, when is technically going to be the last day of school since you're using the 10 days in the beginning? What would still be the last day of school, the 15th in June?
I think it is the 15th, Bob. I have to, I have to mark, you, you're looking at it right. So, so we're using seven days, Bob, and then we're going to have 173 days of school. So it's got to equal 180 and that's how we're divvying up those numbers. But with, with the start date of September 14th, 173 days after that, I think, I think it is, you're right, I think it is June 15th.
Okay, and that's not including any kind of snow days or adding on to that extra week?
Correct. I asked Desi last week, you know, under these circumstances, do we, we have to publish on our, you know how they say you always have to add five days or you have to at least officially have a calendar with five additional days? They still want us to do that. They, not taking a position right now on, on those snow days. The way I look at this, this hybrid model is that it has built in flexibility, it does allow for some, for some flexible decisions to be made, so that if I did have to make some adjustments with certain parts of the school or with, or with moving to a remote day, I would be inclined to do so. I would not choose to go remote if I know half of our towns have no power. That tells me there's no learning going on at home and this is just a legit bad New England weather day. And we're going to have the kids learning, so we wouldn't, I wouldn't want to count it automatically just because it's a snow day.
So the most, the most day, the, the largest day would be the 21st, added on those five days, would be the last day?
I think if you, I think if we had to have five legit snow days, yeah, I think, I think you're right.
It would be the last, 21st. Okay, great.
And this, and I'm sorry, one, one final comment there. I'm sorry, Dana, sorry, your hand go up.
Okay.
We'll publish the revised calendar, we'll publish this plan, which, which was, you know, distributed to parents, but those will both be available on the homepage of our website.
Okay. I have a couple of questions if I may. How are we going to handle MCAS?
At the local level, we, we don't have much to say about that. I can, I can tell you that at the state level, there's been no, there's been no decision, but I've, I've seen press reports, they did have, they did have public testimony on a, on an MCAS moratorium bill. So I think what you, I think what you'll start to see a little more traction on is whether or not it would be a legis, legislature created MCAS, legislature gave, gave the commissioner the authority to modify MCAS expectations, has been no, his authority did not extend to making MCAS changes but 2021. So as of this minute, we're going to assume that MCAS for the sophomore class dawn, we're going to assume that the rising freshman class will have to take MCAS science. We're going to assume that the junior class who didn't take it last year will be taking it sometime in the winter. So I, I, I give this to you, that's a great, it's a great segue, Dan, to just say that one of the things we may have to adapt to is if the state picks MCAS testing days, we'd hope this year that they give wider ranges of when the test could be offered. Because if schools are in hybrid or remote testing reliability, they're going to need the flexibility to say, if we're going to test these kids and it's going to be legit, we really need to have testing windows that are in school.
Yep.
If kids aren't coming into school, makes me question how that can be done in a valid and reliable way.
Right, yep.
We add that to the stay tuned list.
Yeah. Okay, my second thought is if we can't have an open house, first of all, aside from showing what our school is all about, you have a lot, you have set up stations where parents go with their kids and they, and they fill out the application on site.
Yes.
I'm thinking maybe if we cannot have an open house, maybe we can use our cable studios to take each course, whether it's carpentry or whatever, and do a little bit more in-depth on what they're all about, right? It doesn't have to be one three hour video, it can be a bunch of them.
We've all gotten accustomed to seeing YouTube videos that are just a few minutes long and they can be very impactful, yes. It does not have to be a feature length movie.
Right, and, you know, and, and have them, and have, have the town show them on a regular basis about what Selcho is all about. And then if in fact, to help parents, what we usually do when, when we're registering them and, and what we have to do, maybe we can have a video on them, parents, showing parents how that's accomplished. So maybe they can do that from their own computer from home.
We're going to, we, we, yes, Dan, I, I agree, there's going to have to be a digital part to our strategy, absolutely. And then figure out safe ways where we can do that. The, the reverse is also true. We don't, we, we, we understand if, we've also had access to our sending towns to come in and do presentations, we are going to be totally understanding. On, on the flip side, which is our, our colleagues in our sending middle schools, we're all going to have policies about restricting outside visitors and not having kids congregate. So a digital strategy of reaching children, open house, as well as the work that Amy Dow, our counselor does, will be part of a conversation, which I would want us to focus on in earnest after we get the school year started from mid to late September. With technology, kids can apply anytime. We want to give kids a feel for the school. We're going to probably have to do a lot of that on a digital basis.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I have one last one too, Tom.
Sure, Bob.
Our, all our remote education from the teachers will be done from the school, is that correct?
Yes, the only exception to that would be if we have a situation of a medical, a medical situation. But anytime you hear the word remote, you should assume that unless there is another, that there's some other directive from the top down about not accessing the building, yes, they will be in school. And let me give you a quick example. It might be a remote day for the younger kids in academics, that means it's an in-person day for the older kids. But if I'm an English teacher and I'm teaching ninth graders and 12th graders, maybe that the first period of the day, I'm at my desk, my classroom is empty, I'm teaching my ninth grade English class at my desk. 90 minutes later, I'm going to be getting up, going into a classroom where my seniors are, because that's the day they're in school. So for now, remote learning means we are at, we are in Hanover.
That's right. Actually, I like this.
Mr. Mahoney, you, are you on the call?
Yeah, I am.
I'm sorry to have to, I'm sorry to have to deputize you. Bob Haywood had a, had a situation with the call, so I, I don't, I believe we've, we've concluded the agenda.
Yeah.
If, if as vice chair, you wouldn't mind.
I'll let, say a motion to adjourn.
I will, I will back up. I think we, we never voted on the school calendar. We had a, we had a Whitman motion, a Hanson second, but we did not have a motion on the calendar.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, Jim. Yep, if we could do that first, please.
So Mrs. Salvucci.
Yes.
Mr. Manning. You vote to approve the calendar? Mr. Muller.
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney.
Yes.
Mr. Cooney.
Yes.
Mr. Amico.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That is unanimous.